Call to order, Muskogee Creek National Council Agenda Regular Session, December 15th, 2018. The time is now 10:00 a.m. This time, I'd like to ask Minister Tony Buck to please come forward and give the invocation.
Blessed are you, Lord God of Israel, our Father, forever and ever. Yours, oh Lord, is the greatness, the power, and the glory, the victory, and the majesty, for all that is in heaven and in earth is yours. Yours is the kingdom, oh Lord, and you are exalted as head over all. Both riches and honor come from you, and you reign over all. In your hand is power and might. In your hand it is to make great and to give strength to all. Now, therefore, our God, we thank you and praise your glorious name. Father in heaven, we thank you, Lord, for this moment that we have together. Father, we pray for our chief, Lord, and assistant chief. Father, we pray, Lord, for the council, as decisions they make, Lord. I pray, Lord, that the decisions that are made that would be lined up with the scriptures, the word of God, the truth. Father, today, we thank you, Lord, for the leadership of our nation, Lord. And Father, today, if there's one among us that does not know you as Lord who saved their life, Father, I pray, Lord, that conviction come upon them that they would accept you as Lord of their life. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Speaker Lucian Tiger.
Present.
Representative Dell Beaver.
Present.
Representative Pete Beaver.
Present.
Representative Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Representative Joyce Deere.
Present.
Representative Johnny Green.
Present.
Representative Randall Hicks.
Present.
Representative Robert Huff.
Present.
Representative James Jennings.
Here.
Representative Adam Jones.
Here.
Representative Tom Seniorhola Osborne.
Present.
Representative Darrell Proctor.
Here.
Representative Mark Randolph.
Present.
Representative Rufus Scott.
Here.
Representative Travis Scott.
Here.
Representative David Hill is here. Speaker, we have sixteen present, zero absent.
Sixteen present, zero absent constitutes a quorum. All business conducted to be official. Next on the agenda, I have Mr. Billy Holtham, Muskogee Creek Nation AG Youth Development Manager. Would you please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Billy Holtham, and I'm the manager of the Creek Nation Agriculture Youth Program. And I'd first like to thank the National Council for giving us just a moment of time this morning to recognize a young man that's really done something extraordinary. I'm going to introduce Hayden in just a minute, but we've just returned from the Intertribal Agriculture Council in Las Vegas, Nevada. That's one of the largest agriculture Native American agriculture conferences that there is. And they put on a, their youth, their youth department puts on a big essay contest for kids from all over the United States. These kids are, if they're in the top seventy-five, them and a sponsor or a chaperone win a full paid trip to Las Vegas to participate in this conference throughout the week in Las Vegas. There were a hundred and forty applicants submitted, and I'm proud to say that the young man that I'm going to introduce was second. So, I want to give him a big round of applause. I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. Hayden Hodges is a young man from Willica that I just got to know in August. We've got him enrolled in our program, and since then, he's done some really good things. So if you don't mind, give him a big round of applause. I'd like to give a shout out. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Hayden Hodges. I'm a seventeen-year-old junior from Willica and a proud finalist of the Intertribal Agricultural Council Youth Essay. I am a proud member of the Muskogee Creek Nation and the Muskogee Creek Nation Agricultural Youth Development Program. I would like to thank my grandpas for introducing me to farming, my lovely aunt for giving me a place to live, and to my mentor, Billy Holtham. I came into the farming scene of troubled youth, and I am proud to say, thanks to my family, agriculture, and Billy, I am now a hard-working young man. I have put my past behind me, and I'm looking to the future.
Yes.
Johnny Green.
I went from drifting through life to living my best life.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
I came from the small town of Hera to the even smaller town of Willica to learn more
Yes.
David Hill.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
about my culture and to continue my journey on the agricultural path.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Rufus Scott.
Without the Creek Nation agricultural programs, I would not have gotten this far.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
This is only the beginning.
Speaker, you have fifteen.
I would like to again thank my great-grandpa Eugene Golden, my grandpa J.R.
Yes.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted.
Golden, Billy Holtham, Carly Hotvet, Creek Nation, and my great-aunt Sandy Golden, Adele.
Next item on the agenda will be Order of Business. NCR 18-008, A Resolution of the Muskogee Creek National Council Approving the Legal Services Agreement Between the Muskogee Creek National Council and Fletcher Law, P L L C. Sponsored by Robert Huff. Motion to adopt, Representative Huff, seconded by Representative Hicks. Next item on the agenda will be approval of minutes. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Dell Beaver.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman Jr.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Johnny Green.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Emergency session, November 8th, 2018.
Yes.
David Hill.
Planning session, November 13th, 2018.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
Pre-agenda regular session, November 17th, 2018.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones III.
Mr. Speaker, most approve all minutes with any changes necessary.
There.
Thomas Yaohla Osborne, yes.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Representative Rufus Scott made a motion to adopt the minutes with any changes necessary,
No.
Rufus Scott.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
seconded by Representative Yaohla Osborne.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, one against.
Discussion. Fourteen in favor, one against. That motion is adopted. TR 18-128, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief Roll call vote, please.
Dell Beaver.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman Jr.
to Execute a Group Booking Agreement with the Chalked Our Nation for the 2019 Oklahoma
Yes.
Johnson O'Malley Conference. Sponsored by Randall Hicks. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-129, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Execute a Service Quotation and Terms and Conditions with G E Healthcare related to the operation of health facilities. Sponsored by Randall Hicks. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Travis Scott. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-130, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Execute a Contract Agreement Between the Muskogee Creek Nation and Legal Aid Services of Oklahoma, Inc., for the Purpose of Providing Legal Services for the Muskogee Creek Nation Reintegration Program Clients. Sponsored by Randall Hicks. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-131, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Execute a Service Quotation and Terms and Conditions with G E Healthcare related to the operation of health facilities. Sponsored by Randall Hicks. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-129, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Execute a Service Quotation and Terms and Conditions with G E Healthcare related to the operation of health facilities. Sponsored by Randall Hicks. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Travis Scott. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-130, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Execute a Contract Agreement Between the Muskogee Creek Nation and Legal Aid Services of Oklahoma, Inc., for the Purpose of Providing Legal Services for the Muskogee Creek Nation Reintegration Program Clients. Sponsored by Randall Hicks. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-131, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Execute a Medicare Enrollment Application with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. Sponsored by Randall Hicks. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-132, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Submit a 2018 Indian Community Development Block Grant Application to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Sponsored by Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, Representative Randolph, seconded by Representative Green. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Confirming the Nomination of Jesse Allen to Serve as a Secretary of Interior Affairs of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsored by Dell Beaver. Motion to adopt, Representative Dell Beaver, seconded by Representative Travis Scott. Discussion. Discussion. Representative Patrick Freeman Jr.
Speaker, I'd like to be a cosponsor for this bill.
Representative Patrick Freeman Jr. would like to be added as a cosponsor. Thank you, Representative Freeman. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dell Beaver.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman Jr.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Johnny Green.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
David Hill.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones III.
Thomas Yaohla, Thomas Seniorhola Osborne, yes.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Mr. Allen, would you please stand and be recognized? TR 18-134, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing Principal Chief to Execute a Memorandum of Agreement with the City of Muskogee for Improvements to Hilldale School Road. Sponsored by Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, Representative Randolph, seconded by Representative Pete Beaver. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-135, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Amending TR 18-099, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Creating a Muskogee Business Assessment Committee. Sponsored by Robert Huff. Motion to adopt, Representative Huff, seconded by Representative Hicks. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. TR 18-136, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Confirming the Nomination of John Adev Osceola Chotary to Serve as a Muskogee Creek Nation's Ambassador. Sponsored by Dell Beaver. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely. Representative Dell Beaver has made a motion to postpone indefinitely, seconded by Representative Jennings. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Dell Beaver.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman Jr.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Johnny Green.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
David Hill.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones III.
Yes.
Thomas Seniorhola Osborne, yes.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Rufus Scott.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. TR 18-136 is postponed indefinitely. TR 18-137, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Nominating Jeremy T. Pittman to Serve as District Trial Court Judge of the Civil District Trial Court Law Division of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsored by Travis Scott. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Travis Scott, seconded by Representative Hicks. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Dell Beaver.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman Jr.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Johnny Green.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
David Hill.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones III.
Yes.
Thomas Seniorhola Osborne, yes.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Rufus Scott.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Mr. Pittman, would you please stand and be recognized? Congratulations, thank you for being here. TR 18-138, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation Approving an Agreement Between the Nation and Hawkins, Dellafield, and Wood, L L P, for Consulting Services for the Muskogee Creek Nation. Sponsored by Darrell Proctor. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Proctor, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion is adopted. NCA 18-184, A Law of the Muskogee Creek Nation Repealing NCA 18-180, A Law of the Muskogee Creek Nation Repealing MCNCA Title 49 Entitled Muskogee Media and Creating a New Chapter 11 Under MCNCA Title 16 Entitled Muskogee Media and Amending MCNCA Title 16 Subsection 1-102H Entitled Department of Commerce, J Entitled Public Relations, and K Entitled Independent Statutory Executive Agencies and Amending MCNCA Title 49 Subsection 2-102 Entitled Policy and Amending Subsection 1-102 Entitled Organization of the Executive Office of the Principal Chief. Sponsored by David Hill. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Hill, seconded by Representative Huff. Discussion. Representative Hill?
Yes, during our BF&J meeting, I had brought this and asked anyone if they would like to amend some language and stuff, and Chief had, just received several emails this week, Kevin, Elijah, and Chief, and our last one was yesterday afternoon. Did have several of the sponsors contact me on, you know, they really haven't had a chance to review it. What I would like to do is go ahead and pass this and hopefully call a work session after the holidays and review all the amendments. That way, we can just do it all at once, just have the executive office and whoever Chief feels needs to be in attendance, as far as media, if the manager of the media, whatever, and just go through each amendment and just do it once. You know, I'm afraid if we start going over it today, maybe postpone. So, I feel that if we just go through it, go ahead and adopt this, everyone get together, sit down, and review all the amendments and the ones we feel that everyone is agreement on and amended in January.
Thank you, Representative Hill. Any other discussion, comments?
This isn't the substitute.
This is original.
No, ma'am.
This is the one we just got yesterday.
Thank you, Representative Green. Representative Proctor?
Thanks, Speaker. Can we give Chief time to speak?
Chief Floyd? Representative Proctor?
Yes, you've been working on this substitute bill, and I'd like to give you time to go over this if it's possible.
Chief?
Well, as I conveyed in the messages to you in this past week, you know, since the 180 was repealed, several groups have reached out to me, and I think some members of the National Council as well worked with my office and members of my staff to add different amendments and revise some of the wording. I think I laid out some of the objectives of that yesterday in my email to you. So, I think that represents the position of a number of people and a diverse group of people, and so, in that regard, you know, I think, you know, we've done, and I believe that we have met and incorporated the comments from these groups and still have a workable bill. So that's where we stand with the substitute.
Thank you, Chief Floyd. Representative Proctor?
Speaker.
You had, you worked with us on several people this week, is that correct?
This week, yes, sir. No face-to-face meetings this week with the groups, but communication by email.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you, Representative Proctor. Thank you, Chief Floyd. Any other discussion? Representative Travis Scott?
Thank you, Speaker. This morning, we were handed two different substitutes, and I'm in concurrence with Representative Hill, I feel like we need to get back on track the way we had proceeded. You know, I think communication was one of the compliance issues that the executive branch had had. I think we can work these negotiations and barriers out, but I'd like to see us move forward back to the way the media can get back like we had before because these negotiations probably should have happened before we decided to repeal it the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Travis Scott. Any other questions, comments? If there are none, roll call vote, please.
Pete Beaver.
Dell Beaver, sorry.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
No.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
No.
Johnny Green.
No.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
David Hill.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
No.
Adam Jones.
No.
Thomas Seniorhola Osborne, yes.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
No.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Rufus Scott.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Speaker, you have nine in favor, six against.
Nine in favor, six against. That motion is adopted. Next item on the agenda will be NCA 18-185, A Law of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing a Donation to Broken Arrow Public Schools. Sponsored by Robert Huff. Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Huff, seconded by Representative Rufus Scott. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Dell Beaver.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman Jr.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Johnny Green.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
David Hill.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Thomas Seniorhola Osborne, yes.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Rufus Scott.
Yes.
Travis Scott.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Representative Huff? Representative for Broken Arrow Schools, thank you very much for being here. Thank you. NCA 18-186, A Law of the Muskogee Creek Nation Authorizing a Donation to Akima Public Schools. Sponsored by Travis Scott. Speaker, motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, Representative Travis Scott, seconded by Representative Hicks. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Dell Beaver.
Yes.
Pete Beaver.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Joyce Deere.
Yes.
Johnny Green.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
David Hill.
Yes.
Robert Huff.
Yes.
James Jennings.
Yes.
Adam Jones.
Yes.
Thomas Seniorhola Osborne, yes.
Yes.
Darrell Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Rufus Scott.[1353.61]
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Representative Travis Scott, do you have?
Thank you, Speaker. We have Ms. Sandra Lambert of the Upper Elementary Principal present.
NCA-18-187, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a donation to DuRough Public Schools, sponsors James Jennings. Motion to adopt Representative Jennings, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Representative Jennings?
Yes, Mr. Beane, thank you for being here.
NCA-18-188, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCNCA Title 19 subsection 4-106 entitled Time for Conducting New Registration Transactions subsection 7-314 entitled Monolingual Voters Procedure subsection 7-406 entitled Watchers Appointment and Duties and subsection 10-102 entitled Request for Absentee Ballot, sponsors James Jennings. Motion to adopt Representative Jennings, seconded by Representative Dell Beaver. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA-18-189, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a donation to Beggs Public Schools, sponsors James Jennings. Motion to adopt Representative Jennings, seconded by Representative Dell Beaver. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Representative Jennings, do you have representatives of Beggs School here? Yes, there she is. Thank you very much for being here. NCA-18-190, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a donation to Shakota Public Schools, sponsors Darryl Proctor.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Representative Proctor, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Representative Proctor, anyone from Shakota Schools in attendance? Good morning, thank you very much for being here. NCA-18-191, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending MCNCA Title 32, Chapter 3 entitled Surplus Tribal Property Procedures for Disposal, sponsors Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Representative Randolph, seconded by Representative Green. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. NCA-18-192, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation amending NCA-05-094, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a supplemental appropriation to GSA facilities for the remainder of fiscal year 2005 for renovations to tribal buildings, sponsors Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Representative Randolph?
Second.
Seconded by Representative Green. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
No.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, one against.
Fourteen in favor, one against. That motion is adopted. NCA-18-195, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a donation to Midway Public Schools, sponsors Randall Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Representative Hicks, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.
Speaker, you have fifteen in favor, zero against.
Fifteen in favor, zero against. That motion is adopted. Representative Higgins, do you have representatives of Beggs School here? Yes, there she is. Thank you very much for being here. NCA-18-190, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a donation to Shakota Public Schools, sponsors Darryl Proctor.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Representative Proctor, seconded by Representative Jones. Discussion. Discussion. Roll call vote please.
Dell Beaver?
Yes.
Pete Beaver?
Yes.
Patrick Freeman?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Johnny Green?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
David Hill?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
James Jennings?
Yes.
Adam Jones?
Yes.
Thomas Yehola Osborne?
Yes.
Darryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Rufe Scott?
Yes.
Travis Scott?
Yes.